This evening is May 3, 2021. I have 7 o'clock here for the City of Waverly City Council meeting. The mayor and city council have determined that in-person meeting of the city council is impossible and practical due to the COVID-19 pandemic. When an in-person meeting is impossible and practical, Iowa Code Section 21.8 permits a governmental body to conduct a meeting by electronic means. Meeting will be conducted by video conference using Zoom from the council chambers. The mayor and necessary city staff will be in the council chambers. The seven council members will not be in the chambers, but will participate via Zoom conferencing. Comments for items that are on the agenda for the public hearing may be made by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the city council members by calling 319-596-0179 or at HTTPS colon, and it has the rest of the Zoom conference information during the meeting. The video audio conference of the meeting will be broadcast on the normal public access channels. We will strive to maintain the quality of the video and audio during that broadcast. Public access is available through this broadcast. Meeting minutes will still be kept and will include a statement explaining why an in-person meeting was impossible or impractical. I'll officially call the meeting to order and request Val to conduct the roll call, please. Bergen, can you hear me or Val?
I can hear you, but I cannot hear Valerie.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and conduct the roll this evening, that's fine. Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
Here.
Glazer.
Here.
Rothie.
Here.
Anne Schneider.
Here.
Absent this evening is Ms. Balfour. She has a family emergency she's handling. And Mr. Kengas is absent for the time being. He anticipates being able to join us once he gets done with his athletic officiating responsibilities. Join me in the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Item E is approval of the minutes from the April 19, 2021 regular meeting.
The move to approve the April 19, 2021 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Glazer, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Item F is our guest council person is Barbara Glasner. Is the guest of Councilwoman Rothie. I'll hand it over to you, Ms. Rothie, to give an introduction and then also over to Barbara to add anything she'd like.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Barbara and I are meeting the first time tonight virtually. We've corresponded by email. But she is an Iowa native, came here to Waverly to attend Wortburg and basically never left. She's a retired educator. And she expressed interest in learning more about city government. So here she is. I'll let her tell you a little bit more about herself.
I think you hit the highlights. I'm not sure there's much more to say.
Well.
Anybody have any questions?
If there is anything you'd like to add in the future, be sure to do so. You know the rules of engagement, able to fully engage with comment and dialogue, just don't have a vote. So welcome aboard and enjoy yourself. Item G is a public hearing. During this public hearing, individuals may make comments by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the city council members or by calling 319-596-0179 during the meeting. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing to review and approve the zoning map update. Deputy Clerk, have you received any written or oral comments?
I have not.
We have not. Are there any public comments? Anybody that has joined us?
Are you talking about the rezoning of the Irving School or no?
No, this is a generalized zoning map update. Either Bill or James want to articulate a little bit more?
This is the map that's being adopted. It just basically fills in the gaps from the last time it was adopted in 2017.
So all of these, this zoning that is presented on this map here, Ms. Bodine, is the current status of that. So it's basically certifying or approving. This is the current standing of our zoning. Is that correct, Mr. Berger?
That is, that is correct.
So it's basically along the same lines as when we re-approve the city's code as well, something similar to that.
Changes made every, you know, every so often. And so we have to, at some point, redo the map completely. So we show all the new changes.
Right. So there's no zoning changes being made through this process. It's just certified and the map is accurate to what our, what zoning changes have been done or conducted since the last map was presented.
So Bill, I wonder if for the audience, could you just summarize maybe the high points of what was changed? Since it's a little bit difficult to tell from the maps.
So there's probably not a lot of major changes. There's been at least one, one or two new districts added. And then usually it's individual lots that are changed when they're asked to be rezoned. So you really couldn't see much difference. I'm going to flip it back and forth. If you see the 2017 map right there, and then you move up the 2021, you won't really notice a lot of difference. So it really is just pictorial descriptions of the few areas that have been changed.
One of the spots I know is there where the, the gas station is there by the golf course. I know that that zoning is now showing up on the map correctly.
It's red, yeah, right there.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Drinkow. Again, this would represent, you know, any of those changes that have gone through the process of coming to city council for approval, which such as that gas station Casey's property, so.
And this is one reading too, right? We don't do three on this one, on this particular one, right?
No, just one reading.
One.
Okay.
And what we're going to do in the future, we're going to probably do it in December when we approve the code and do it every year. We don't like to print them that often because it's expensive to print the big, the big sheets. But we always have a digital map that we should approve every year.
Yeah, okay, good.
With that, I'll officially close the public hearing and entertain a motion on the resolution.
Motion for Resolution 21-67, approving the new zoning map update for the city of Waverly.
Second.
Motion by Glazer, second by Bergen. Any further council discussion? Hearing none. Roll call Val.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
On a vote of five to zero with two absent, Resolution 21-67 is approved. For the, the vote, yes, stay tuned for future discussion about the Irving property and potential zoning changes there. So I appreciate your attendance tonight, just to clarify what this was about, so. All right, item two, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing for the consideration of the request for proposal, RFP, for development process for disposition of the former Washington Irving Elementary School site. Any comments that you've received? All right. Any public comments in particular about the RFP process?
Okay, this is the rezoning of the Irving School, correct? As long as I'm talking on the right channel here.
Yeah, this would be for the development profit process, not necessarily the zoning of it quite yet. That's, it talks about that, so yes.
Okay, to start off, they're, they're planning on building 17 condos. Or am I not in the right area where I need to talk about this?
I believe you're in the right area.
Okay, so we live right across the street from basically the front door of where Irving stood. Proposing 17 condos in the middle of the Sturtevant addition, which is the historical addition of Waverly. The Sturtevant House is six blocks down, the first house in the Sturtevant area. I know during the Zoom meeting, we talked about the argument of we want to have, not argument, but we're trying to get walkability downtown with these 17 condos. The walkability for me is a, you know, you have the argument, is the downtown on the west side or the east side? Okay, so you go to an activity in Coleman Park. Typically, people are going to gravitate towards the east side. Once the theater gets going, you've got your restaurants, you've got your bars, you've got your majority of stores on the east side. So for me, the walkability factor doesn't really play in for me because, face it, people don't walk a lot anymore. You put 17 condos over there in a predominantly historical neighborhood. I know the aesthetics and we want that cohesive with the neighborhood. However, we're looking at single garages, if I'm correct. We're looking at potentially 34 cars. Okay, so you have a, a single driveway, a single garage at 700 square feet on, on each level, which are going to be two-story. You're not going to have a lot of storage. And for me, those cars are beginning, going to be sitting out because there's not stories in their garage. The, the infrastructure of this, and I received emails from my cherry that stated that they don't know how old our sewer and water. It was stated that our house is built in 1900. We probably still have the four-inch water pipe that goes up, correct? And looking at infrastructure, I'll let my husband speak on the infrastructure of what he found on Ninth Street between Second Avenue and Bremer of July of 2020.
Well, when I was walking, I, they did a good job coming up from the hospital to Bremer Avenue. Tore all the old stuff out and put all new plumbing under the road there before they reconcreted it. And so I took some pictures and I think we sent them off to.
I know I sent them to my councilperson, which is Rod Drinkow.
And looked at what they were, and they were pretty deteriorated. And what I'm wondering is if we're that way down here, or are we worse? We could have a real issue with the infrastructure that's under the roads right now. I'm not talking storm sewers so much. I'm talking sewer and possibly water. They did redo it a little bit when they built the, the hospital and they did it when they did the high school and stuff. But we're down here and what I'm worried about is you, you plunk in 17, 15 to 17 condos in a triangle-shaped Irving spot. You have all that packed in one little area. And that could be a real issue. And so until we really know what the infrastructure is, and that should be fixed first, I'd be a little hesitant to start plopping down all those buildings in one little spot. And the other thing I've got with it is that this is all R2 from the river. The second block in is all R2. You've got, you've got businesses on the first block on both sides of the road on Bremer. But one block in, it's all residential, clear from the river this way. You're going to take one square area here and spot zone it and try and change it to R3, which allows you to do multiple family dwellings. And I have a little problem with that. And the other thing is that these condos, they're going to have single-car garages, as my wife stated. They're going to be used for storage. And that means all the cars are going to be parked outside, either on the street or in behind their, behind their unit, which would be good. But if I lived there and if I pulled up, I wouldn't pull around the back. I'd park on the street and walk in the front door. Probably because I couldn't get my car in the garage anyway. But, so that's one, one issue that I really see as, as an issue.
The, the other issue I have is that, you know, we, we commented on the R3. Is it really appropriate or is it even legal to plop down, you know, spot zone a place in the middle that's predominantly R2? If you go, like you said, if you go through the river and come west, yeah, you're going to have commercial properties on Bremer Avenue. But predominantly, that's mainly R2. So my question is, are you spot zoning? And is it appropriate to do that in this area? The other, the other problem that I see, we talked about it in the zone meeting or the planning and zoning, is, you know, we would have a say on maybe some covenants. But I don't know realistically, legally, if we can say, because we don't pay taxes, they're paying their own taxes, that we can't, you can't rent those out. We're in close proximity with Wortburg. Wortburg is great for our community. I will not argue that. However, we've had students on our block that were renting two houses down. We had them puking outside. We had them peeing in our bushes. We've had beer cans all over. So for me, you know, I, if you're going to rezone it, which, let me, let me retract that. I don't think this should be rezoned R3. Now, if you want to put houses over there, divide the lots and put in three, four houses that are aesthetically cohesive with our neighborhood, I'm fine with that. But spot zoning and putting R3, I think there's just better places to go with 17 condos than across the street. And I know it's going to be developed. We know that. We just don't want it R3.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? I see there's a couple other people.
Well, I can talk. My name is Eric Johnson. I'm in the neighborhood here too. I'm right off of Fifth Street, so just south of where the lot is. I mean, I, I think I probably share a lot of the same sentiments that the Bodines shared. It does seem like, like it's not, it's not really coherent with, with the neighborhood to, to put in that type of housing, especially in what is a historic district. It does seem like there are, you know, plenty of, of challenges on the infrastructure side of things. Which, I mean, you guys, you guys know, this is a process that begins here and then you guys get into it as we go further on. I think for me, when I talked to Isaac, he, he was saying that, you know, the, the city's looking at developing this to be housing. It's a great location and that they're hoping for it to become, you know, affordable housing for people. I guess, you know, they're looking at, I heard is, you know, around 225,000 per unit there. I guess I'm, you know, I don't, this, this neighborhood are, like my home is, I think, assessed around 150 or so. We wouldn't be able to, to purchase a, a home for 225. It would drastically change what's going around here. It doesn't totally fit in. Those things really stand out to me. And I look at it, this is probably more, more strong, I guess where I'm coming from, is that I look at it as the city owns this spot. This is a chance for the city to invest in itself and in the community long-term. When I look at the other developments that have been happening around town, I see very similar developments as to what this one would be. So a lot of duplexes, triplexes, things that are kind of fitting the same mold. It seems like if we have this spot as a city versus a private landowner who's just selling it out to develop it, it seems like we have a chance and opportunity to do something different here. You know, I would, I would hope that we would not turn it into housing. It seems like a funny spot to try to, try to make housing, in my opinion. I think that there's some really great things that we could do with the space as being things other than housing. Now, if it's got to be housing, it's got to be low income. I, again, am saying, why don't we, why don't we try to do something different than what's happening everywhere else in town? Try to put in something that has some cohesiveness with the neighborhood. Maybe is trying to do things differently than, than we're doing elsewhere, but actually would be a long-term investment to having things be a different type of development. So what I mean by that, the things that come to mind right away are different options for, for power, for the power grid and things like that. Long-term, looking at different ways for having things be sustainable. And then the other thing that stands out to me is lawns, green space, and, and how we do those things. It's again, another, another thing that I think we can see, we could possibly make some changes as a group or as a community to, to try to do something different that I think would benefit. And we can make this stuff, there's developments all over the country. People are trying different things. And we aren't talking about $225,000 homes. It can be smaller, more modest and have some creativity in the way that this stuff's put together. So I look at this as like, hey, we got a real opportunity here. And I think we could really do something unique, particularly because the city owns that spot. And I, I think just in terms of how do I feel as somebody who lives in this neighborhood? I guess I would really ask to, please don't put in triplexes there. Please don't cram in a bunch of, a bunch of housing there. It would really, really affect what, what is here. You know, as far as our family goes, we're out there all the time. We go play out there all the time. We walk there every day. Even this afternoon, we were out there playing around the dry run, catching frogs and chasing rabbits. And, you know, we're, it's, it's a really nice space to have for this, for this neighborhood. And we would be very sad to have it gone, so. Cool. Thanks for listening. Thanks for hearing me out.
I, I would like to also touch on something too. I mean, the future scenario with this, I'm not sure when you're going to be building, if this goes through, which we're hoping not, but, you know, you got to look at, you're, you're looking at a $250,000 home. Right now, with trusses for houses going up 40 to 50%, building materials are through the roof. I just think you are going to get a less-than-stellar house, housing development over there at that, at this certain point in time. The other problem with, we feel in the future that these will be a big turnover because you're going to have young, probably newlyweds, if they, if, you know, depending on what their financial situation is. You're going to have a two-bedroom home. I can't remember, Bill, is it two or three bedrooms that we're looking at?
You're muted.
It isn't really set what it's going to be.
Okay.
We just projected some things that it might be. And we're going to go through the process of asking developers to recommend what they would put in. process of asking developers to recommend what they would put in. So they could be two or three bedroom. I doubt they would be more than three.
But you're talking seven hundred square feet on each base, right? That's the preliminary what we talked about in P and Z.
Well, what we did is we tried to put together a, a site plan that would show you, um, pretty much the, the most it could be and it could be less than that, or it could, they could be bigger individual units. It, it's really up to the developer to make a proposal, um, with this type. Any buildings are gonna have to have fifteen feet in between them, which is closer than R two. Um, they would have to have twenty-five foot, um, front yards, uh, which is, um, probably more than some of the, the, uh, homes around here because a lot of those were built with twenty feet frontages. Um, I think we're trying to require that they have green space, that there be, um, walkability, front yards, um, access to the trails, uh, and we, we're just waiting to see what the developers come up with for proposals.
Um, because the problem, you know, looking into the future, we're going, okay, is this going to be a renters haven over here where people invest in these and just keep overturning, overturning and overturning? If you're gonna have a seven hundred square foot house, like I said, they're gonna go to young families. They have more than one or two kids. There's gonna be, for me, realistically, there's gonna be a high turnover with families in and out, in and out. Um, the second thing is, we bought this house knowing the school was over here. We knew that when we bought it. We dealt with it for nine months out of the year. Um, I will honestly tell you, when we had a lot of issues with parking, uh, we use our alley as a driveway. That's the only way we can get in to our own garages. So we had issues with people, you know, blocking. They didn't care if there was a, a yellow strip that the city put in eight feet up. They didn't care. They just parked there. You know how hard it was to go find a parent and say, hey, can you move your car? Because we can't get in and out. Um, you know, emergency vehicles, you have all this parking on second, Second Avenue. Well, that's a thoroughfare to the hospital. We're gonna run into problems there. Um, but my biggest, I, I think my biggest thing is it appropriate or legal to plop an R three in the predominantly R two neighborhood?
Well, I, I guess I kinda look into the future a little bit and I can envision these townhouses or condos over there. Um, five, six, seven years down the road where the owners have bottomed and they have either moved out or they bottomed with their sole purpose of renting them out. I mean, it's a perfect spot for rentals for Warburg kids. When you hear you think about it, it's a perfect spot for that. And this is what I don't wanna see and this is what I envision for the future over there. Um, you've got fifteen, sixteen, seventeen units over there. Um, you're gonna fill them up with renters and you're gonna have, each renter's gonna have their own car with, with the single star, a single stall garage. You don't use that as a garage too much anymore. Use it as a storage. And so the cars are gonna primarily sit out. And so this is what I'm really worried about when you do this multiple stuff in lieu of, say, four or I don't know how many houses you could get in that area and plot it out. You probably get at least four, four houses over there that could be built aesthetically similar to what's around here with two-story high-peak houses to look really, continue the historical part of Waverly. I'm all for multiple housing because I think we really need it and affordable housing. But when you get really affordable housing, they're cheap and the younger people can afford, you know, two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollar houses. They gotta start out small. So I'm afraid that when they start plopping these in there and you say, well, they can't be rented. I could rent my house out. I don't think the city could tell me that I can't rent my house out if I, if I chose to do that. I don't see how you could tell them whoever owned them that they can't rent those out if you buy them. So I'm concerned about that, you know? Multiple houses over there, uh, four or five, if you could get them in there, it'd be great. Take the multiple condo area and try and find a spot that would fit that better in, in that kind of an area. I'm just trying to keep it out of this historical district.
And also if you get, if they're rented and you get kids in there, I mean, face it, you have four Warburg kids in there and they're paying four hundred dollars a month. That's making their mortgage plus there's four more cars.
I think this is a, a really good opportunity for me to, um, just clarify, uh, resolution twenty-one sixty-eight. Um, so this, this action tonight, if, if approved, is not formally changing the, um, the zoning element of that, that parcel or parcels, um, from anything to R three. That'll still have to go through planning and zoning and then come to the city council. It's beginning the initiation of that. So your points are, are, are well heard. Don't, don't get me wrong there. I, I believe by the council, I can't speak for them. But, um, basically it's, um, opening the door to use the RFP that was, uh, developed by the three members of the planning and zoning, um, and the Economic Development Commission and then staff. Um, they developed that. So that's what this is really about is just initial phases of it. So we'll still have to, the zoning will still have to go through planning and zoning and then come to city council. So there's, there are quite a few, uh, steps that are still involved. This isn't the, the final blessing by any means of what's going to happen with that, with that property, just, just to clarify. There any other public comments before I close the public hearing? I haven't had the phone ring or anything here. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty-one dash sixty-eight approving the request for proposal RFP process for the redevelopment of the former Washington Irving Elementary School Site and approving to move forward with the process to rezone the parcels to R three residential.
Second.
Motion, Baglaz, or second by Bergen, council discussion.
Well, I'm very happy to hear these comments brought up. I think these are all things that we will want to keep in mind when we have, uh, proposals for what to do with this land. Um, I do think that we should move forward on this request. We may have some proposals that I think fit very well into, um, what the, the Bodians and the Johnsons are looking for. We may be able to find developers who are willing to put these single-family housing, uh, projects together. Um, so I would, I would love to see that and I would like to see the opportunity for those proposals to come forward. Um, I think that the city council would do well to consider these proposals and see what, what comes back. Um, if we are not happy with everyone, if we're, if we're not happy with any of the proposals that come back, we do not need to approve any of the proposals. Um, we are not obligated to, um, approve any of the proposals if none of them come back that we find acceptable. So this is simply a request for proposals and I'm gonna support the process.
I wanna thank Eric and, and also the Bodians for hopping. And this is really nice, by the way. It's like a front porch conversation that comes. I know I complain about the Zoom meetings, but it really is, uh, good when residents, because I think that's what's been missed in this process and I've heard from a lot of people on this issue, they do not want this there. And I look at this, well, you know, first of all, I wanna go back a year and I would say that, you know, we've had COVID and that is gravically gonna change the housing needs to which those are still a question mark here for us. We're still deciding our fate on which way we wanna go on that. So that would be the first thing I would say. But I, you know, I think, um, you know, the, the biggest thing here is we're not listening to the residents and we really, really have to step back and do that. But I'll tell you, just on the development, I refer to my Bible of, of cities and this is, uh, the death and life of great American cities, Jane Jacobs. And, um, this book here says we should not do this development. So I, I don't even wanna move forward with it because it's just gonna spark, uh, controversy with the, with residents. We don't need that right now.
Uh, I've got a concern about the timeline on the rezoning process and maybe, Bill, you could answer this for me. Um, these two, uh, items, the, the RFP and the rezoning seem to be tied together. Uh, if we decided not to go forward with any of the proposals, um, is the rezoning still going to be, uh, I, I guess the question I have is would the rezoning be done first before we've even received the proposals for the, for the RFP? Or can we wait with rezoning until we've seen if there are any RFPs that seem to be, um, uh, worth pursuing? I, I, I don't wanna jump the gun on the rezoning on this because I don't wanna rezone this to R three if we don't have to. I think it's, that's not a good idea.
So I do think you need to make a commitment at, at some point of, of leaning towards the R three to move forward with this because I'd hate to go through all the effort and then have the developers, um, question whether you're gonna follow through, even if we do, um, get some good developers to, to propose things. Um, I, I think it really ties into what we see as a vision, um, for this location. Um, but it, it really depends on what the developers come up with. But a, a single-family home idea would be four homes along the Second Avenue and probably one or two along Sixth Street, which means you'd have five or six driveways on a pretty busy street. We were trying to look at something that would only have two drives in and out, um, and, and make it, um, have all the front facades facing the street instead of having driveways and garages facing the street, which is generally what people are building now, um, and which ends up happening in a lot of locations. It, I'd hate to, I, if we did one, one before the other, yeah, we could do that, but I don't know if the developers would actually wanna do it if, if they didn't think you're committed to changing it to R three. Um, if they're gonna come up with a development for an R three, they're not gonna wanna make any effort to do it probably.
Well, I guess I'm just not real happy about rezoning this to R three unless we have a solid proposal for somebody putting a development in there. Because if there's not gonna be any development, I don't wanna have it rezoned. That, that's my problem.
So the thing is, if we don't do a development, if the council doesn't find one that they like, they can actually ask that it be zoned back. Cause it's, it's the council's, it's the city's property. So that could change. If, if there was nothing that was acceptable as an R three use, you could change it back to R two or anything else you wanted to change it to because you control the property. Nobody's gonna do that without you.
So that, that is a possibility that it could be rezoned back out of R three, back to R two, um, if there was not any, uh, proposal that found to be acceptable.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, an- another concern that I've got is, um, as I was looking over the material, uh, there's a joint committee apparently that was created, uh, between, uh, three members from each commission, it says in here. And then the same joint committee is gonna be responsible for the initial review of all the responses to the RFP. Is there any possibility to have, uh, some neighborhood input on that committee? Um, I'm, I'm afraid the committee's not hearing, uh, some of the, the direct, I, I, I know they're hearing from neighbors, but I think there would be some utility to having several people from the neighborhood actually su- uh, serve as part of that review committee?
Uh, we've already asked Sonia to, um, and she's a neighbor. Um, she's agreed to be on that committee with the other six, um, to provide the ad input and she's already, um, uh, has a lot of communication with people in the neighborhood, has indicated that she started a closed, uh, Facebook group for those, for those people and we felt that she was a good representative.
That's fantastic. Uh, I'm, I'm glad to, I know Sonia, you had told me before that you were considering going on to that committee, so I'm, I'm glad that you're doing that. I think it's absolutely essential that we have, uh, a number of people from the neighborhood that actually are representative on that committee so they can take a look and see what's going on because I don't think it's appropriate for us to make these decisions without having some input from the, from the neighborhood. The, the third concern that I have, and I'm, I'm going to, uh, echo what the Bodians said. Um, and I don't know if Eric mentioned this too, but I'm sure he was thinking about it is, you know, we have a very, um, a, 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 a concern in our neighborhood with rental properties and that has been a problem for a long time, uh, particularly student rentals. And, you know, I have to agree with them that this property would be a perfect magnet for someone to purchase as a, uh, non-owner, um, and, uh, and use it as a rental property and, and would not really be all that concerned about who is renting the property as, as we found with a lot of other places. Um, I am going to be absolutely dead set against this if there's not some very strong prohibitions in the agreement, um, in, in the restrictive covenants with the, the condo association about having non-owner rentals. Um, and I, I, I'm not only talking about family members, cause, uh, I know there are situations where parents will buy a property, um, for their kids to stay in while they're going to college at Warburg and, uh, okay, it's a, it's a family rent, a family home because it's owned by the parents, but you might have a good half dozen kids that are staying in that, that, uh, location. So that is not really an acceptable thing either. Um, th- this is going to be a real disaster if we can't control, uh, this proposal so that the restrictive covenant is very strong that these properties are only going to be occupied by, you know, owner-occupied properties. Um, so that, that's a concern I have and a warning that this, uh, you know, I'm gonna do everything I can to see this doesn't go through if this is not restricted to owner-occupied housing. And I think that's the purpose we have for this anyway, is we don't want these to be, um, in and out, excuse me, in and out monthly rentals. I mean, these are properties and I, and I know people are not gonna be living here for years and years and years. You know, these are gonna be, uh, starter homes, live in it for a while, uh, you know, start a family and then buy a larger house somewhere. I mean, that's what's gonna happen. There's gonna be a lot of people coming and going. But when you have owner-occupied homes, I mean, they, they, they take care of it. They wanna maintain the property values and that's not true when you have, uh, necessarily true when you have rental properties. So that, that's a real concern that I have. Uh, my intention is to go ahead and vote to move this forward because I am really curious to see what kind of proposals we're going to get. Um, I do have some concern about, um, rezoning this. My, my concern is that once it's rezoned, it's gonna be really difficult to convince, uh, this council to zone it back. Um, but with that said, uh, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and support this so that, uh, we can take a look and see what some creative people can do with this and see if it's something that we can work with.
Um, I just wanna thank the neighbors for commenting. I, uh, attended the neighborhood Zoom meeting that we had a few weeks ago and we had a very good, um, and productive discussion, I thought, about the pros and cons of development of this area. Um, I will say that I think, I think we're all concluding that we know, um, who's going to move in and how long they're going to stay and whether they're going to value the property or not. I think, um, if it is a, a condo type situation with a homeowners' association, I do think that they will have some power to limit whether the properties are rented or not or whether they're owner-occupied and then it will be up to that condo ownership group to enforce that. Um, I think that, that hopefully people who will move in will learn to value the neighborhood just like you guys do and want to stay there. Um, I think that we did a bit of a disservice by including a drawing of the proposal and designs because I don't think any of those town home designs look particularly historic that were included in the packet. And I don't think we know how many units are going to end up there. There was, there's, uh, nothing that says that a developer has to put seventeen units in or fifteen units in. Um, I agree with the comments that it would be great if we could use this space and do something unique. Um, you know, I think that having a development of small houses, cottages, um, you could even put those in some sort of homeowners' association. It would mean potentially, um, more driveways, but not necessarily out of the, out of the property onto those main streets. So I do think we're looking for something unique. I agree with Rod. It's, it's sad that we have to do the zoning first, um, but I would have no qualms about zoning it back if we needed to, if we didn't get an RFP that looked good. I will say, I, I, you know, there are, are three lots near there within a block of that. And so I think it's tough to say that this is spot zoning when you've got other, um, multifamily dwellings within a block of that site. Um, I do think the infrastructure is a concern, although Irving School was there and I'm sure they used their fair share of, of water and sewer infrastructure. And so I don't know how much it's deteriorated since then, uh, but there won't be any more toilets flushing with a condo development. flushing with a condo development or housing there than there would have been with a school. But I think, I think it's really important that we try to get something that is aesthetically pleasing, that fits with the neighborhood and just doesn't look like another cookie cutter townhome development. I think that would be a waste of that space. And, but I agree with the other council people that have spoken that, you know, I think we need to make something unique and, but that meets our housing needs. We don't know that people are going to come in and flip those properties. People might, might enjoy living there and want a simpler lifestyle because certainly there are people who are moving toward that. So I think the only, the only way for me to vote is to let this proceed, see what happens with the RFPs. I'm really glad that Sonia has agreed to be on the committee. We talked about that at the, at the meeting a few weeks ago because that will make sure that the neighborhood is informed. And I hope everybody keeps an open mind with the process and that we get some really good proposals coming forward because it sounds like we're all going to be fairly picky about what goes there and we should be. So I'm looking forward to seeing what people can come up with.
Anything else? Hearing none, we'll go with a roll call vote now.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
A vote of five to one with one absent. Resolution 21-68 is approved to move forward. Again, thank you to the Bodines and Mr. Johnson for joining us this evening as well. Moving forward to item H, the consent calendar. Following items will be acted upon by a voice vote.
Mr. Mayor, can I interject just for a second because I'm driving?
Yes.
I was wondering if I would be able to just turn my video off and leave my microphone open so I don't have to look down at things and you don't have to look up when I'm driving? If that's acceptable?
It's reasonable to me. We know that you're in the vehicle and will be joining us eventually soon, so it's probably less distracting for us as well on our end, so.
Okay, that's what I'm going to do then.
Unless somebody has an objection to it, we'll go ahead with that. Okay. All right, item H, the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item number one is setting the public hearing date from May 17th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall to amend the fiscal year 2021 operating budget. Item two is to set the public hearing date to review an application for a state revolving fund, SRF loan for June 7th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Item three is set the public hearing date to review the Cedar Lane Culvert Replacements Project Plan specifications, form of contract and estimated cost for June 7th, 2021 at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall. Item four is approve the purchase of an Orion 3.0 camera system demonstration unit from Mid Iowa Solid Waste Company Incorporated of Johnson, Iowa for the purchase price of $20,500. Item five is a pay request from Farnsworth Group for the Public Services Center North Edition 2021 for the amount of $11,965.88. Item six is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the Rolling Prairie Trail Extension 2020 for the amount of $629.87. Item seven is a pay request from WHKS and Company for the First Street Northwest Reconstruction 2021 for the amount of $1,303.30. Item eight is a pay request from Holland Hall Engineers Incorporated for the Youth Ball Fields 2019 Cedar River Park for the amount of $5,446.50. Item number nine is a pay request from Cardinal Construction Incorporated for the South Riverside Park and Shelter 2020 for the amount of $2,381.40. Item 10 is a Class B native wine permit for renewed purpose. Item 11 is ownership update for Walmart Supercenter Number 1005. And item 12 is a Class C liquor license for Wooden Foot Saloon. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
I move, we approve the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Rothie. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Into regular business at this time, item number one is Resolution 21-69, a resolution approving contract with the Institute for Decision Making, IDM, at the University of Northern Iowa, UNI, for Economic Development Commission's Strategic Planning. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 21-69 approving a contract with Institute for Decision Making, IDM, at the University of Northern Iowa, UNI, of Cedar Falls, Iowa for Economic Development Commission's Strategic Planning for a not to exceed amount of $7,000.
I'll second. Motion by Rothie, second by Glazer. Council discussion, if any.
I don't have any problem with the contract. I think it's a, it's a great thing they're doing. I guess I would just want to emphasize again, as I was reading through this, in the process, the city council doesn't come into play until the very last step of the process, the implementation part. I think as I mentioned last week when the chamber was giving their presentation and Travis Tolliver, I think it's extremely vital that the council be involved in this process from the very beginning, from the, from the gathering, stakeholder input, envisioning and goal setting. There's no reason not to have the people's representatives involved in this. So I would be, I think it's a mistake not to have us involved. I think we are, I think there was just an oversight in the contract and in the timeline, but I just wanted to make sure that my objection was noted that at least one council person here wants to be involved in the process.
City council elected officials are listed in task one in the paragraph as well as staff and other areas to be part of that, planning and gathering stakeholder input. So council is there from the start as far as building the vision and goal setting based on that. I don't know if they're necessarily part of it, but it certainly can be incorporated into. But council and elected officials are listed in that very first item for the gathering of information.
All right, I'm not going to get into a discussion with you, James, about how important the council is to be involved in this, but my point is just that it's important, not just in the information gathering stage, but in the goal setting and in the whole process, frankly. So I would really encourage that that take place.
So Rod, I appreciate you wanting to be involved in that. It would change that, that whole process quite a bit because you'll have council meetings that you'll be doing instead of, it'll be really a city strategic planning. And this was intended to be kind of the commission to kind of talk about what it wanted to do, what its goals were. And it wasn't making necessarily specific recommendations at this time, but more strategically looking at things and then how it was going to act as a commission. That was what they had asked for. They wanted to do it as a way of having the members decide how, what their role was, what they should be doing, what they, how they should be recommending things. Otherwise, it just becomes another strategic planning for the entire city that we did a few years ago, which didn't get, didn't delve down for the commission to know what they're supposed to be doing and how they're supposed to be doing it. So that's the only reason you're not, it's not just a council strategic planning because that's what it would be if the council was all involved in the whole process.
Well, I'm going to have to disagree with you, Bill, because I think that if we're doing economic development strategic planning, that the council, in some method, way or form, needs to be involved in that. I think it's too incestuous to have the Economic Development Commission as the only people that are involved in doing strategic planning for the city. I think it needs to be a broader base. And maybe James is right, maybe that first information gathering is broad enough that it would bring that in, but I, I do not like to be irrelevant and I refuse to be irrelevant when we're doing strategic planning for any part of the city. So, you know, there needs to be some way to make the council people's input relevant into what we're doing when we're doing strategic planning for economic development because that is one of the key issues that we have in this city is economic development. And, you know, not having, not figuring out some way that you can get input from the city council other than city council meetings is probably not acceptable to me.
Perhaps there's some confusion about what the strategic planning is about. It was my understanding that this is for the commission itself to figure out their own process and how they are going to work with the chamber and other economic development players to then create a formula for how to go about economic development. I didn't think that this was to help them figure out what are Waverly's economic goals and opportunities and deficits, but more how should this commission function? You know, the feedback I've received from, from people on the commission and who previously served is they're just not sure if they're an advisory panel to us, if they are supposed to formulate economic development ideas and bring them to us. And so I guess I thought this was to help them figure out their own identity and how they would be working within our city system. If that's the goal, then I think it's important that the city council, maybe even past city council members be, you know, surveyed about how do we interact with them and how can they be the most helpful for us when we then go about a larger strategic planning, you know, situation? So maybe it needs to be clarified about whether they're going to be helping design economic development goals or whether they're helping with the identity crisis that the economic development community seems to be having.
Yeah, that's very helpful and I really appreciate that because if this is simply a way for the Economic Development Commission to decide what their processes and goals should be as a commission, yeah, then there probably isn't a real good reason for city council people to be involved in that. If it is a goal setting for economic development for the city of Waverly, that's a totally different issue and I have real concerns if we're not involved in that. So if the, maybe the goals need to be a little bit better defined, but I don't have a problem with it if it's simply saying, you know, this is how, let's find out how the Economic Development Commission is supposed to operate and where they fit in the structure of the city and not just saying, you know, these are the goals we got for the city. So, thank you.
That was my understanding then too, so I appreciate you clarifying that, that, and it did, you know, as I've expressed on economic development, you know, that is a bit long in the tooth, I think, the way that is structured with where we're at with the business cycle. And now that we are entering a new business cycle, it might be a little bit early to do this, but I think it's definitely needed. So, yeah, I think it's be good.
All right. Hearing nothing further, roll call now.
Drinkow?
Uh, yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kengas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, Resolution 21-69 is approved. Item two is Resolution 21-70, a resolution directing the allocation of 2021 American Rescue Plan funds. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 21-70 approving the use of $1.3 million of the 2021 American Rescue Plan funds for the wastewater treatment plant project as well as $110,000 to offset lost revenue in the hotel motel tax fund of the city.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Drinkow. Council discussion for staff.
I just have a question for James. Do you know or do we know how they determine 1.3 million per Waverly? Was there some formula for cities?
I think a lot of it was based on regional amounts and then per capita within, so we will receive 1.41 million. For us, the rules are still not out. They're hoping May 10th, the Treasury will put out the official rules, but everything that's been set so far lays out the basic items of water, sewer, broadband projects. Of course, we're in a very sizable sewer project right now. And then recouping of lost funding related to COVID, which the only sector that really took a significant hit was hotel motel. And going forward, we think that'll be the sector I think the longest to recover. So instead of trying to split it up, 10,000 here, there, it was the simplest way to put that there. It's a general fund item anyway. We can simply have it there. It'll offset the losses we've taken and then, of course, the 1.3 helps to hold the rate increases that have already been improved without having to increase more, at least for a year or two after the project's finished. So I think it was per capita driven, but based on a formula that we were not aware of and we've not really seen from the federal government as to how each region received their funding. But within that, it was per capita is my understanding.
Did you have to send in an application for that, James? Did we have to do that or were they just give it?
To us is the allocation per city and then the limitations of what it can be used for has been the real interesting part of it, especially when you look at the counties who really don't have water and sewer projects for the most part. And rural broadband is starting to expand anyway, so we're not really sure what a lot of counties will spend their funding on. But that's their problem. Ours, we definitely know what we're going to spend ours on since we have that sizable project going. So it could change slightly going forward, but for us, the best use, I believe, and that's why I'm presenting to you, is mainly for the wastewater treatment center and then the offsetting of hotel motels since that's the significant hit that we took.
And James, will it come directly from the federal government or does it have to funnel through the state?
I believe this will go directly from the federal government. There's two different designations depending on how your city's set and one will be through the state and they will have 30 days to then in turn send it back to the regions that we're in and the other straight from the federal government. Now, as you say, that we might be one of the cities that will receive it from the state. There's just two designations, I've not gotten that deep into it. The first half will come probably late summer, then the second half is one year from that time period. This is not something we receive a lot, some of either, which will help us as we're going forward with the cash flow on the sewer project. This also, we'll see how it impacts the hotel motel tax as that comes in partially as well. So I'm not 100% sure, but I will track that down. But I think, I think we'll be getting it from the state initially.
That's a lot of stimulus for municipalities, wow. I didn't look at the, I'm trying to keep up with everything, wow. Maybe we could get another 20 million then, have the flu every year.
I just do not have that, so I'd forego the 20 million if it meant not having this again.
So it sounds like the federal government is giving us money and this is just a resolution saying, yes, we'll take it.
If it comes, this is where we will put it. That's what we wanted to get optimized out. It helps when we're going for our SRF loan as well. If we know that we have committed that amount of funding to that to buy down the amount of debt we'd be taking on from SRF. So while we could have went forward assuming, I wanted a formal declaration from you as a council that this is what we will do with it when we receive it, assuming it comes and every indication is it will, so.
James, that's a part of what's already been passed by Congress, right?
I believe so, yes. It's just a matter of time that we will receive it.
So the future one is where we want to figure out what we want to call infrastructure and apply for things for that, then.
Correct, there's still an infrastructure bill that may be coming. That is something separate. As you'll see a little later, we've applied for infrastructure funding on trail system, which is carved off as well independently. So everything has its niche of what they're allowing to be funded in certain areas. We're just trying to hopefully be ready and have projects that we've been looking at and working on to be available and close enough that we can make the application and hopefully possibly get those funds. Unfortunately, we do have to put something into the pot as well. Again, we'll talk about that here in a minute on the other items, but that's our goal is to utilize all that we can, if it's coming. If we don't have it, somebody else will. And so we might also utilize what we can get our hands on to help offset some of the costs that we're going to face when we can, since this was not traditional infrastructure, water, sewer and broadband. Since this was not traditional infrastructure, water, sewer and broadband.
All right.
Just one more thing before we vote here. The James alluded to something I didn't catch in the packet, but I want to question this to make sure. Was there anything attached to that at all? Are they, are they making us do anything for this money or is it just like, here's your stimulus check?
Uh, no, sir. There's no indication there is anything other than I'm sure it'll be audit requirements after the fact. Because it's of course federal stimulus money will have single audit issues. Going forward, that'll increase the amount of our audit slightly, but there is no application. There's no. Hook, so to speak, that we or anyone else that I know of is aware of. I'm not as trusting either. There always seems to be something. It just might be five years from now. We'll have to do something with this, but. At the time that we are looking at it, there's nothing indicating there's anything that we have to do at this point.
Excellent. And I appreciate pushing, putting this onto a, a responsible project. It just makes a ton of sense of getting out there with that.
Well, as, as I recall, there were a bunch of. Resolutions we had to pass when we accepted the federal money to redo the First Street. Northwest. And I suspect that we've already got all of those federal requirements passed. That might come along with any of this money. So I can't imagine there'll be any additional hooks that come with results of expecting this money.
I hope you're correct. I never rule it out because history will per repeat itself. There's always something, but at this point, we don't know what that would be.
All right. Roll call now.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash seven zero is approved. Item three is resolution twenty-one dash seventy-one, a resolution endorsing the application for COVID nineteen relief recreational trails program funds. For the replacement of the Ivanhoe Bridge and Baskins Creek Bridge on the Waverly Rail Trail segment of the Rolling Prairie Trail. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-one dash seventy-one as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Kangas, council discussion.
I very much appreciate that the timeline has the bridge reconstruction during the winter when there are fewer bicyclists using the trail.
Yeah, that was the foreshadowing I just gave you. It's very timely. So I appreciate Val kind of helping me out with that agenda and throwing it right next to the next one. Yeah, this is another. Pot of money, so to speak, that we're going to apply for. There have been discussion. I know there's some people talking about what about the big bridge across the Cedar? The maximum on this was about one point three million, I believe, and that is double that or more possibly. So. To try and accomplish that and then have to come up with the remaining balance as well. I just don't think it would have been feasible. So Mike has done a very nice job of determining what bridges we think estimates. Would allow us to get a couple of them in within this funding session. It's very much an issue being in the world. Mobilization is simply difficult. You can't exactly drive up to it and there you are. It is something to get equipment into there to be able to work on this. So it is going to be a little costly more than you might think for bridges this size. But if we do receive the funding, we've looked at CIP funding right now to. To do a two hundred thousand dollar match. Without that, I don't think there's much of any chance we would even receive the funding similar to other projects. You have to put some skin in the game. To have a better chance of receiving the funding itself. So to put in two hundred and get one point three million, that's a pretty good payoff. And hopefully it will come through and we'll know soon. But if, if it does not. These bridges are looking to be replaced in the next three, five, seven years, depending on the deterioration, including a large one. But. For now, we're going to focus on one of the largest out there and then another one that kind of helped fit within the dollar amount that was being requested.
Yes, I am, I am very thankful for Mr. Cherry's. Recent inventory of the quality of the bridges along the bike trail so that we know kind of where the need is. Which, which of those bridges are most at risk? So that we were well positioned when this money came available to act.
Absolutely.
Well, and I think it's totally appropriate that we're using COVID nineteen relief funds. I mean, if it was anything that kept people. You know, healthy and sane and, and not what? Not as burned out as they might be by the social isolation. It was using the park system. So I think it's great.
Hearing nothing further. We'll go with the vote, Val.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash seventy-one is approved. Item four is resolution twenty-one dash seventy-two, a resolution approving final pay request and additional. Tree to Wells Hollow Landscaping for Waverly Streetscape Tree Project twenty twenty. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-one dash seventy-two approving final pay request to Wells Hollow Landscaping of Waverly, Iowa for Waverly Tree. Streetscape Tree Project twenty twenty in the amount of three thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents for retainage due. And an additional six hundred seventy dollars for replacement of a vandalized tree.
Second.
Motion by Rothie, second by Bergen, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call now.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash seventy-three or seventy-two is approved. Moving forward with item number five is resolution seven, twenty-one dash seventy-three, a resolution approving change order number one to the South Riverside Park and Shelter Project. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution twenty-one dash seventy-three approving change order number one in the amount of a five thousand twenty-two dollar decrease. For using concrete instead of brick pavers for the South Riverside Park and Shelter Project.
Second.
I heard Bergen on the motion and Rothie on the second. Council discussion if any.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at the schematic here from Alliance Architects and it shows where the. Brick pavers would have been on the shelter. And there are also some. Cross hatches, I guess, or one of a better word, that are labeled stained paving strips. Are those stained paving strips going to still be in there? Is that part of the concrete or were those part of the pavers?
Yes, the stained, the stained. Strips will, will remain. So those will still be there.
All right, great. Cause. Yeah, I, I would hate to see this just be one giant concrete slab. Needs to have a little bit of color to it and it's unfortunate that the pavers aren't there, but. I think we can probably go ahead and live without them. And it's nice to save a little bit of money on a project that's already. Kind of over what we had anticipated it would be. So. Thank you, Garrett.
You bet.
I've never seen anywhere in a northern climate, I guess, where these brick pavers do well anyway. So I, I think it's just a smart move to stain. We should have stained concrete everywhere.
Will this be stained concrete or stamped concrete or just plain jammed concrete?
There is kind of a mix. There are some places where they're stamped. There is some where it's plain. And then obviously the stained strips as well. Yep. And Bill's bringing up the picture there for you. The. Yellow, the shaded yellow there is where the. Pavers were originally going to go. And now that is the area that will be concrete along with the rest of the entire area there.
But will that replacement concrete be stained or stamped or just straight gray concrete?
Uh, that part will be, I believe, just the straight gray concrete.
Any final questions? Comments? Thank you, Garrett. Hearing none, roll call now.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash seventy-three is approved. Item six is resolution twenty-one dash seventy-four, a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance. From Baker Enterprises for the Eagle Ridge Drive and cul-de-sac extension and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-one dash seventy-four approving contract. Bonds and certificate of insurance from Baker Enterprises in Waverly, Iowa. For the Eagle Ridge Drive and cul-de-sac extension and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen, council discussion.
Guesses this is probably the last time that something attached to this project is going to come before council? Or do we still have a few more items that we need to take care of?
Well, at least a final payment at some point.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm going to be happy when this is done so I can put it behind me.
All right, roll call now.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash seventy-four is approved. Item seven is resolution twenty-one dash seventy-five, a resolution fixing date for a meeting on the authorization. Of a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of not to exceed thirteen million three hundred thousand sewer revenue capital loan notes. Of the city of Waverly, state of Iowa, and providing for publication of notice thereof. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of resolution twenty-one dash seventy-five fixing date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement. And the issuance of not to exceed thirteen million three hundred thousand dollar sewer revenue capital loan notes. Of the city of Waverly, state of Iowa, and providing for publication of the notice thereof. For a public hearing on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM in the council chambers of city hall.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
I have Bergen on the motion and Glazer on the second and I'll entertain council discussion. Thank you, sir. Hearing none, all input. We'll do a roll call. Sorry about that. Well, go ahead.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash seventy-five is approved. Item eight is resolution twenty-one dash seventy-six, a resolution adopting updates for the city of Waverly Employee Handbook. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution twenty-one dash seventy-six, a resolution adopting up, I'm sorry, adopting updates for the city of Waverly Employee Handbook.
Second.
Motion by Drinkow, second by Bergen, council discussion or staff if needed.
I'll just briefly put it out there. Abby Meester at HR is on as well. A lot of these are clarifications of language you already had in there to adjust to law changes. Or items that had been misconstrued or things that just clarify what already exists. I don't believe there's anything new or that significant. Again, if somebody was provided, so by all means, if you have questions, Abby or myself will answer them for you.
Has there been any response from the employees? Favorable or unfavorable?
From the handbook, we've presented the information to the directors and they're in support of the changes. Other than that, through discussion throughout when situations come up, which kind of triggers some of these changes, I feel like we're responding to those as we go.
Anything else? Hearing none, roll call now.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Kangas?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
On a vote of six to zero with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash seventy-six is approved. Item number nine, our final item, is resolution twenty-one dash sixty-five A, an addendum to resolution twenty-one sixty-five. Amending and replacing resolution twenty dash one twenty-six requiring a face mask be worn by any member of the public. While being an occupant of a public building. Entertain a motion.
I will move to approve resolution twenty-sixty-five A. An addendum to resolution twenty-one sixty-five, amending and replacing resolution twenty dash one twenty-six requiring face masks be worn by any member of the public while being an occupant of a public building.
Second.
Motion by Glazer, second by Bergen. We'll have council discussion, but I'll let Mr. Bronner. Interject here to begin with.
Uh, yes, sir. As discussed in the last meeting, I worked with HR and we went ahead and. Made a determination of any staff that is needing to still require vaccinations that would like to. We did have a couple. Looking at the time and date, they'll be able to acquire them. And then looking also if those positions interact with the public generally, because some. Employees simply are in the field, do not have that interaction as you would in city hall, elaborate, et cetera. We've looked at a reasonable date of May twenty-eighth to. Even though it's a Friday, we figured we'd send everybody off a nice Memorial Day. To be the last day of the mask mandate here in the city owned buildings. That accomplishes what was discussed in the last meeting with the twenty-one day window. As well as allowing them another week to truly get their first vaccination going, their next vaccination. And again, not each of these employees have that interaction with the public. So we felt like it was a compromise from a, like a mid-June date. Which it would have most likely been had we held it to the letter as people have decided to. And some of these individuals would have had vaccinations. They had some health issues prior that didn't allow them to. At this point, they can or choosing to do so. So again, that is the proposal from myself through staff that May twenty-eighth, or you can make it June first. It really didn't matter. It's over the weekend. We're not here anyway, but we thought May twenty-eighth would be sooner and simply just a nice segue into the Memorial Day holiday weekend.
I do just need to clarify on the record that Stanford study, it was peer reviewed and that was a, you know, part of the trap. And, and I just want to know, question, you know, how many peer reviewed studies would I need to bring to flip this?
Just checking.
Could I even bring those because you know.
That so-called Stanford study was published in the Journal of Medical Hypotheses. So there in fact was no study done. It was a, someone putting together interesting hypotheses. Encouraging other people to do studies, but there was no study in that article itself. The journal is medical hypotheses.
Before we get into too long, a discussion that I hope we don't get into again tonight. I just want to move forward that this is the resolution to end the mask mandate at a certain date. We provide. a certain date. We provided that date. If there needs to be another discussion of that kind of topic some other point in time, I'd rather you put it on a different agenda. That is not the point of this tonight. But again, Mayor, it's your call. That is my preference of what we were dressed to do going forward this evening.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Mr. Bronner, that I feel that my personal take on this is, you know, a, a May twenty-eighth date of releasing this, again, um, on the council's vote this evening, um, keeps in line with prior to our next monthly slated discussion about the topic. Um, it falls back into, um, what the, uh, Councilman Bergen discussed about, you know, vaccinations with some of the council members and getting their antibody run-up time in place, uh, that they're more comfortable with that, and then falls in place with our, uh, June seventh in-person council meetings as well. Again, uh, nothing in this states that a person cannot wear a mask in, you know, to work. Um, that's, that's their own prerogative. Um, so I would agree if, if we want to have, you know, in-depth discussion about where we're going. Um, but between now and, and the twenty-eighth, I, I think this sets a precedence of our timeline. I've seen that with a lot of other cities, counties, and even states where they've rolled out timelines and this essentially is that. Um, their timelines have been, uh, you know, a broad sweep mask mandate such as in Cedar Falls or, or a location like that. So that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about our own, our own folks here in the buildings primarily, so. Any?
As, as, as long as the employees are comfortable with this, uh, this is okay with me.
And I believe that's been fielded, um, by Mr., uh, by James and the, at the director's meetings and that.
Yes, sir, it is.
At least that's what I've been, been shared about getting to this point and this being on the agenda the, the way it is. So, thank you. And with that, with filling in the date of May twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-one being the last day for the public building mask mandate, which is a Friday, uh, before Memorial Day, being that part of resolution twenty-one dash sixty-five A, roll call, Val.
Glazer?
Yes.
Cangis?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
On a vote of five to one with one absent, resolution twenty-one dash sixty-five A is approved. Item J is reports from boards and commissions. Item one is library board of trustees minutes from March ninth of twenty twenty-one received into the record. Staff updates, Mr. Bronner.
Yes, sir. I know Garrett has a brief update and then, uh, Val will also have a very brief update.
All right, thank you. Um, Art Walk was last Saturday. Uh, if anyone was able to make it out or not, uh, even with all the wind, uh, it still seemed like a pretty good success. Lots of people walking through Coleman Park, so it was, uh, very good to see. Um, anyone who, uh, has been past Coleman Park, you might have noticed the, uh, uh, red bu, uh, I'm sorry, the rosebud tree, uh, right along First Street there. Uh, we've made a few hopeful improvements to it. Uh, if anyone's seen it, you can see that, uh, it's kind of breaking apart, uh, deteriorating a little bit. Uh, we have kids playing on it, et cetera, et cetera. But it's a really neat tree, so we're trying to save it as long as we can. Uh, so take a look at it next time you go by. There's some really cool braces, uh, that are trying to hold it up for as long as we can. Uh, then the last thing that I have tonight is to mention again that we have the community gardens, uh, planting day this coming Saturday, May eighth, nine AM. Uh, we're going to be going from nine in the morning until noon or until done, depending on how many volunteers that we have. So, uh, yeah, if you have a chance, come out and, uh, help us plant some community gardens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That wraps up staff updates. We'll move into city council comments.
Uh, sir, Val does have a.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
This is just a reminder that, um, eligible electors who wish to have their name placed on the ballot for the War Two special election must have their papers into the auditor's office by five PM this Friday, May seventh.
All right, thank you. Apologize for skipping over that, just after being reminded. We'll move forward with council comments and start with Mr. Drinkow.
I was one of those people that made it out to the Art Walk on Saturday, and it, it was, uh, a, a nice day until the wind came up and made it a little bit more difficult. But I just wanted to mention that, uh, I did see the efforts that the, uh, city staff has made to, to try to preserve the life of a rosebud tree out there. And, yeah, and the tree was absolutely gorgeous. It was beginning to bloom and just purple and just all kinds of great comments from people that were just very appreciative of the efforts that were being made to save that tree. So I want to thank Garrett and his staff for what they've done out there, and hopefully that tree will continue for a number of years so we can enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bergen, you're up next.
Nothing today. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Rothie.
I'll just echo Garrett's invitation to come out to the community gardens. You don't have to know anything about gardening. Uh, you just have to be willing to get your hands dirty and, uh, it's, it's fun, so come on out. Also, um, there's an exchange club golf tournament the same day, Saturday morning. I don't think it's supposed to snow or monsoon this weekend, so, uh, they might still have some room for some foursomes if you'd like to golf. That's it for me. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Glazer.
I just wanted to thank the city for putting up an official twenty-five mile an hour sign on the south side of Cedar Lane as you come around the corner northbound instead of, um, the neighbors', um, self-made twenty-five sign that was there. I think it's, it's appropriate to set this, the cadence for the speed along that lane as there's more and more walkers and bikers, so I appreciate that.
You're on mute, Mayor.
Gotcha. You're up, Mr. Schneider.
Oh, I'm up. I didn't hear that. That's what I thought, because I was doing, oh, I gotta be up, so he said my name, but I couldn't read your lips. So, uh, I, you know, if I can tell, everyone's had a long Monday. I, you can tell it. You can tell from the faces. So I'm not going to make it any longer. Uh, everyone enjoy whatever they do that gets those long faces out of the way.
Thank you, sir. Um, our guest council member, um, this is Glazener.
Um, just thank you for allowing me to sit in on this, and I am going to second the appreciation of an actual sign on Cedar Lane that, uh, I, I've, I've been telling Pete that we need to put one out that says check your speed, so thank you.
Excellent, thank you. And coming in, the final stretch, Mr. Cangis.
Thank you, um, for indulging me tonight a little bit on that. Uh, glad I was able to join this, but it did bring up, uh, thoughts as I was listening and driving, um, talking occasionally. Um, when we get back to meetings in person, um, that we kind of make sure we take a look at our policy regarding, um, participation not being in the council, um, chambers. Uh, we've had a policy for allowing council members to call in but not take part in voting. And I know with Zoom, at least everybody is involved by Zoom in the same manner. Uh, I don't think, personally, I don't think we should try to incorporate a hybrid of allowing some council members to Zoom in and some to be in person. I think it, we need to, if we're going to be in person, we're in person, um, to do that. But I think that's something that as a council we should, uh, consider and make sure we clarify with our council rules, uh, going forward on that. Um, the only other addition I wanted to add is that this Saturday will be the Waverly Shell Rock Boys, uh, soccer tournament that is one of the largest high school tournaments in the state, uh, during the regular season. Uh, and so it will be a fairly full complex out there this weekend. And if you want to enjoy some good soccer, come on out for that. Uh, if you're not into soccer, just be aware that there will be a number of visitors in town. Thank you.
And with that, always Waverly nice, as we, uh, are out and about giving, uh, people good recommendations of, they'll be asking where to eat, where to find this, where to do that, and it's our, our duty to be helpful. So, uh, with that in mind, um, on Friday morning for a couple hours, myself and Executive Director Travis Tolliver from the Chamber visited a, a small handful of businesses, uh, downtown. Uh, got to experience the soft opening of Get Roasted, um, prior to their full opening on Saturday. Um, lots of really good engagement with the, uh, store owners and store employees, uh, about the, the temperature of what's going on in the, uh, commercial arena and sales in our, our downtown district. And, uh, for the businesses that weren't, uh, visited in this first one, uh, just be aware, you're, you're next. We'll, we'll slowly and surely get around to as many as we can, um, with that. And so again, encourage any council members, um, to take up that opportunity to, to join us, um, to experience that. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Cangis, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is the same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.